With all is made order, I pledge my pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask for a motion and a second to approve the amendments of June the 12th. Smith? Smith's second. Oh, y'all vote?
Yes.
No one signed in?
No.
Presentation and discussion. Okay. Bertie?
Do you have questions?
Well, what just so...
Should you want my recommendation that's been proven by grievance procedures?
Just remind us.
I mean, just state the facts is all I'm gonna do, I'm gonna say the facts.
Right, yeah.
Just the facts. The facts are that we are paying them correctly. Okay? They are employed for two hundred and twenty days, not two hundred days. They're employed for two hundred and twenty days. They are getting the daily rate that they would get if they were working two hundred and sixty-one days. Because what I do is I look at the most that they could make if they worked two hundred and sixty-one days, get a daily rate, and then I multiply that by two hundred and twenty days, which is the actual number of days that they work. And that's how we, that's just how school systems work. And we went through two different grievances and, you know, we are doing it correctly. I think to deviate from what we're doing could cause some grievances because in essence, what you would be doing is you could get yourself into paying vacation. Okay? And that's the only thing I want to warn the board about, is being careful and not getting us into a situation where we're paying vacation. Then that's gonna create a huge grievance. Okay? Because nobody gets vacation except for the superintendent. So my recommendation is that we leave them at two hundred and twenty days and they're, you know, I'll only need ten months of Army pay to cover the two hundred and twenty days.
What was he talking about? Another check had been sent and they hadn't received it. Did you guys understand that, that they hadn't been paid any? Turn, you remember, don't you?
I remember what you were saying, I was understanding.
Um, you know, the, I can only pay them what our contract says. Our contract says pay them for two hundred and twenty days. Now, the only thing that is outside of that contract is those eight additional days that we give them. So, you know, they'll pay us half of those eight additional days. But, that, I mean, I've worked with the Army for probably six or seven years now and the Army and I are okay with everything. There's no problems between how we pay and how the Army reimburses us. There's absolutely no problems.
Does the Army send you the check?
They, what happens is the Army, they said the MIP, Minimum Monthly Instructor Pay. They said that, and that's what I pay from, is I calculate that every month, or they tell me what it is every month. And then they'll send me half of that. Okay? So they'll send me half, and the county picks up the other half. Then the county picks up all the benefits for the instructors.
Does the Army send you half of the Army rate of pay or what you perceive to be the board rate of pay?
Uh, wait, let me just give you guys a little handout. Since we're, since we're on this...
He was saying that the Army had sent their part. He said that we have not received any of that. And so I don't know.
So they send you ten checks, eleven checks?
Yeah.
Ten checks?
Now, if they did send me eleven, they'll pull it back. Okay? So we've had that to happen before because they kind of messed up on the contract. The Army would just pull it back.
What do you mean by they pull it back?
They just will reduce one of the payments. And in fact, one of the payments was reduced. I think maybe the April and May payment was reduced.
So they, if they send you too much one month, the next month you don't get as much?
Right, they just pull back, they just adjust it.
So they determine the rate of pay?
Yeah, here's, see this, that's called MIP, alright? And it starts out each, the first six months are the same. So if you look, you'll see Plumway in the first column. And there's every month, July, August, September. Then, they always get a pay raise. So I've got it set up so that I thought that there were pay raises. And then I recalculated to give them, to make sure we're getting there correctly. But when we talk about MIP, those numbers come straight from the Army. And that's what they say they should make each of those months. I, you know, I calculated for twelve months. And then if you'll look down there to the bottom, and let's just take Plumway. I go ahead and set them up as if they were a teacher. And for Plumway, I had him set up with an eighty of eleven years. And if I looked at his salary schedule for two hundred and twenty, for two hundred and twenty days, he would make forty-three thousand. Then, at the bottom there is a supplement from the Army, which is like ten thousand. And then that's his total pay for the year.
Bertie?
Mm-hmm.
You have, now, you have twelve months.
Yes.
But we only get ten months' worth of pay.
That's correct.
Why do you have the other two?
To make sure I get the correct daily rate. I want to be sure to include every month because, you know, those months there, July cha, or January changes. It bumps up in January, so I want to give them the effect of the twelve full months of pay.
But they don't get twelve?
No.
But we, we don't receive twelve months?
No, I'm just trying to get them...
We receive ten.
And I'm just trying to get a true and accurate daily rate. And I think I have to include the full twelve months, determine the correct day of rate.
Yes, that, we, we do teachers that way?
We, it, that's all done in the background already. So the teachers, you know how, guess what, remember, there's a daily rate for teachers? Okay? Same thing, I'm just calculating their daily rate.
You can do both the same way?
You mean, the teachers...
They get two hundred and sixty-one days too, you can feed that to them.
I, I would refuse on this. Okay, Donna.
I, I don't understand this, but what about teachers?
Teachers is calculated on a daily rate also. Okay? Like, let's look at, well, Trisha's a, uh, let me give us a good example. Okay, well, let's just take, um...
Take one of the C, the agriculture, she's a two forty.
Two forty, okay.
Do we have a two forty or...
Yeah, so there's no schedule for a two forty person.
How about a two hundred day teacher?
Okay. So, and what that is, is that's a daily rate times two hundred days. That's what a two hundred day salary schedule is. So, we decide we'd want them to be two hundred and twenty. We use that same daily rate that's calculated for two hundred days, and we just multiply it by two twenty.
Sorry.
Now, if we want them to be...
But you don't do this that way?
Yeah, I do, yeah. I'm doing their daily rate, see?
So you're doing your twelve months and not ten?
Right. But the same thing with teachers. If you want to do a teacher, if you want to get a twelve month on the teacher, you take the daily rate, multiply it by two sixty-one.
Yeah, but you're using really the, the two hundred day, daily rate of everybody. And then if they work beyond two hundred days, you multiply that times the extra days. Is it any different for these fellows?
Yeah, certainly not.
Because when you set it wrong, you do this two sixty-one thing.
The daily rate's a daily rate. It's either, once you calculate the daily rate, then we just determine how many days you want to employ people.
So their additional days be calculated just like anybody else's?
Yeah, yeah.
Based on their two hundred, two hundred day...
Yeah. So if we, if they were employed for two hundred days, you would take the daily rate, it would be the same, multiplied by two hundred days. Now, if we wanted to be two twenty, daily rate times two twenty. If you want to be two forty, daily rate times two forty. Now, if they were two forty, I would probably pick up an extra month from the Army because I would need eleven months better.
Well, but no, I'm like, Donna, when you set it two sixty-one, I got a little confused there. But it's all on our computer, there's, there's this computer just like everybody else's working.
Now, we've been paying them for two twenty, and then each year we've been adding...
Eight days.
Eight days.
For the last couple of years, I think we've done that.
Okay. I wonder why don't we pay them two-thirds? Is there a reason why to do that?
Well, no, no, we offered them more days, and they didn't want to work more days, remember?
Well, I wasn't...
No, you don't remember.
Yeah, I remember.
They didn't want to work more days.
But you would have heard of, I guess they're like, is that they feel like they work days beyond the two hundred and twenty-eight day?
We pay them for every day that they work. So, you know, they needed, um, okay, let me say, I'll start from the beginning. They are required to work the two hundred day school calendar. Like, just like everybody else, you know, we all work our two hundred days. And then, they work twenty days outside of the calendar. Just like Donna, you're two forty. Uh, Mr. Royal Christian, okay. So you work those extra days outside of the calendar. So that's what the R, R two C, R two C instructors do, is outside that two hundred day calendar, they work days. And also, if they work on a Saturday or if they work on a Sunday, we pay them for those days also.
And that's part of their two hundred and twenty day?
Yeah.
They gave us a handout, they gave, showed us all the days that they worked, the contract that constitutes those days.
And we have, and I think Trish had just shared, did I send you a copy of their extended day calendar? Did I send you that? I meant to do that while I'm left, and, which really kind of shows how they work. I think they worked one day in July and, um, just a few days maybe in August before the, the school calendar started. But what you, what you have to think about, we can't pay them, and I think Trish probably put it the best that I've ever seen it put. They would be paid for full calendar months, but they're not ever actually working a full calendar month. Uh, you know, they just work a few days in, in July, if any, maybe, I think they had one or two days. Then in August, you know, you don't work a full month of August. September, we pretty much work all of September, we pretty much work all of October. November, they have a week off, so they're not working a full month of November. So there would be five vacation days for those folks if we were paying them for the full month of November. And you go into December, so there's probably seven days off in December, yeah, at least. Yeah. So there's seven days, if we pay them for a full month, there's seven days to pay vacation. Then you go into January, so you're work, pretty much working all of January, February, March, April. You've got a week's spring break, so there's another. And then you go into April, we work all of April, all of May, and then in June...
It's still, they're, you know, they're still working two hundred days, two hundred and twenty days. And even in those, if those days are outside the school calendar, they wouldn't expect to be paid for those. Why wouldn't any other teacher be expected to be paid? I mean, I don't understand that.
Well, if they work more than the two, their contract.
Right, well, that'd be...
I mean, it's just like me, you know, I'm gonna end up working more than two hundred and forty days, but guess what? I bet Trish is not gonna say Bertie brought yourself a check. Are you, Trish?
No.
No, I understand.
Are you sure?
I'm positive.
You know, um...
Well, and I'm just saying that if there's a two hundred day calendar that everybody follows, then if they work days beyond that, then...
Outside of that, we pay them.
They get paid for so many days, if it's two twenty, they get paid twenty, whatever one days might be.
And then they turn in a school calendar that says, here's the days that I worked and we keep track of everybody that has extended day calendars.
Is, are there any requirements that people must work their extra days before or after the two hundred days? At one time?
We did, for principals.
In Ju, I remember that. Uh, in July...
I do with the days.
In July, you can only work so many days before school started. And then, when school ended, you can only work, is there anything like that in effect now?
We do not have anything like that right now.
Well, for anybody.
Well, I don't think, no.
Well, principals and assistants.
Well, but we...
Yeah, we're gonna work it back.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that in a minute, that's the reason I was talking to you.
I've actually got this, you sent that to me the other day because we've already had that discussion about putting that back in.
I just wanted to say, related to something else.
Maximum days, you can turn around and pay them. Extra person maximum, doesn't it?
Yes.
Have we had to send back money to the Army each year?
I've never paid a check to the Army. And now, if there was, and I'm gonna say, and it's actually, it just, it kind of happened last year where there was confusion on that contract, and they thought we wanted eleven months. We didn't, and then that's why they pulled, they only gave me half of the payment to pull back that money. Okay? But they adjusted all out, they know what's going on, they adjusted all out.
So this term you use is like, that's how they got money extra back?
Yeah, they'll just...
All the payment back?
Yeah, they'll just, they'll just cut, and in fact, it just, it just happened, you know, I usually get about six thousand dollars a month, it was three. And then I was like, well, why did that happen after one, it just caused that contract, it was a little bit, and stuff last year.
Are they refusing to go on two-thirds? Or they don't want to, or, I don't understand that.
They did say they didn't want to work extra days, I remember that conversation.
But they did, they did give...
Exactly in context, but they did, did not want to work more days.
And they don't want to work any more days.
I think they did say last time though, that they would go to the two forty, and that would cover any of those.
Right, that's what they, remember they were using, I think Wayne County, they said work two hundred and forty days.
Forty days, yes.
Right. Now, weren't there other counties like Campbell, Hudson, that was what they, two twenty?
Uh, Campbell works two twenty, I haven't checked that. I think they were two twenty also, Wayne was the one.
I thought that you gave a couple of examples, somebody gave a couple of examples.
Okay. You can, sometimes calculate something. Let's say you get six thousand dollars a month for one month.
Okay.
And in that month, uh, we pay them, the Army pays them.
And in that month, there's twenty working days.
Why wouldn't you take that amount and add the twenty an extra day in there?
Well, because Donna, there's not twelve twenty months in a year. So you have to look at calendars, and here's what the problem is. There's ten twenty day months, but there's not twelve twenty day months. There's actually thirteen twenty day months. And Trish is considered a thirteen month employee, and that right, Trish, are two hundred and sixty-one days. Those are considered thirteen month employees. Twelve months, those two forty people were considered twelve month employees based on the twenty days.
But that's not how teachers are gonna pay. They get two hundred day...
They're considered ten month, okay.
Two hundred day, but, and it, it comes out to ten months, twenty days paid, and that daily rate. You could divide that and come out, but you can't divide the other and come out.
The other?
The other's that.
Yeah, you can.
You can, but the daily rate will be higher.
Their daily rate is gonna be the same.
There's, see, there's changes every six months, Donna, they get a raise every six months.
Right, right, I realize that.
Now, had they not got a raise, and if the Army says, okay, here's what their annual salary is. Say it's, you know, fifty thousand dollars, their annual salary is fifty thousand dollars. Now, you just take fifty thousand, divide it by two hundred and sixty-one days, because that's the amount of working days in a, in a year. Monday through Friday days, there's two hundred and sixty-one days. So you divide that by fifty thousand by two sixty-one, that gets you a daily rate. And how many days do we want to employ that person for? That, that the right times, yeah. And that's how, you know, I've been here seventeen years, that's how we've done it. And like I said, this is just, this has been tested in court twice.
Well, could you explain the circumstances of what was actually tested in court? Was it the daily rate of pay that was in, was that what was it?
Is that the point, they think that it should be higher daily rate of pay, is that the gist of it?
And it went to grievance twice, and that, when that was the issue.
And do you know what I always, Bertie, with counties pay the same way? I mean, do you have an idea, or...
You know, I, I've never checked with any counties because I want, you know, we went to grievances, I'm doing it right. So, the Army, the Army has, I've spoken to them, you know...
There's nothing from the state that I'm...
No, there's absolutely nothing from the state, no.
It just seems like this comes up, this keeps coming up, and, you know...
Well, it comes up because we...
It needs to settle at some point.
I think because we let it come up.
But if I've gone to grievance on an issue and I've lost, then I, for some reason, I've gone and done, you know, assuming this is the same issue, which you said is, and I, and I lose again, why would I think that I'm in, being wrongly treated? I don't understand, I don't agree.
Was, was one of the issues that, you know, I'm trying to recall, because they can sign a ten month contract and, and they were getting, they're supposed to be getting eleven with the, the actual signing of a contract?
Every case has been that they want to have what in essence amounts to vacation. Because they want to be paid for those full, like, they want to start in, uh, say, August and be paid for every day then until the end of the school year. Okay? So they want payment for August, September, October, November, December, January, February, March. They will make June. So they would want eleven months of payment, but only for those two hundred and twenty days. And like I kind of explained, you're getting paid vacation. Because if you're getting paid to work spring break and you're not working, you're getting vacation paid. We may not call it vacation pay, but I know if I'm not working, I'm getting paid pretty much like vacation, I mean.
But still, I, I mean, I'm confused here because are, are they working two hundred and twenty days regardless? Even in their scenario?
Yes, they work two hundred and twenty days. Because our contract with them is that they are required to work two hundred and twenty days, and that's what they work.
But I mean, what you just said there, would they still be just working two hundred and twenty days, or more?
Yeah, but we would be paying them for more.
If they're only working two hundred and twenty?
Yeah, but we would, but if you get eleven months of pay, of Army pay, that bumps that daily rate up.
But they're working two hundred and twenty days.
But you're getting, what you're doing, Steve, is you would be taking, let me see how to explain it to you. You would getting, they should be working two hundred and thirty days? I don't know if it's since I've gone back for a while. Um, okay. For twelve months, they would have two forty. If they got, if we got twelve months of Army pay, they would have four two hundred and sixty-one days. Because they were getting paid for every day in that calendar year. Okay? And, and what we're doing is we're doing a conversion from months to schools.
I know, but I'm going back to what we said earlier, that they get a, a daily rate based upon a two hundred day employment term like everybody else. Then, if you work more days than that, it's every how many days over the two hundred days, that day rate.
But the only thing is, Steve, I use, I, I do a daily, daily rate because I don't have a salary schedule that the Army or that the state calculates out. The Army, state...
You do, yeah.
Yeah, state calculates out for all of us. Here's, you know, if you've got a degree, here's what your daily rate is. You know, just how many days you want to be employed, multiply it by daily rate, okay? The Army doesn't give me that, they just say, well, I guess actually they do. They say, here's the MIP, here's what they make if they work every day of the month, here's what their pay is gonna be. So then, divide that by two hundred and sixty-one days, and there's your daily rate for these folks. Now, how many days you want to employ them? You want to employ them two hundred and sixty-one days? Like, if I would do twelve months, then they would have to work two hundred and sixty-one days. Okay? I did eleven months, they would have to work two hundred and forty days, eleven calendar months. Now, don't get school and calendar months mixed up.
I'm not making any mistake.
Okay.
It's just the, the, the rate of pay that they get for each day that they work seems to be...
That's the only contention. But, I mean, you know, look at it, if, I mean, just look at that. If you work two hundred and sixty-one days, what are you gonna make? I mean, there it is. If they worked, and if you were in the real work world and you worked two hundred and sixty-one days, and you got a raise here, you'd make that much for six months, that much for second six months, and that's what your daily rate would be, that's what you'd make if you worked every day.
You have to compute it a little bit differently than you do for other people because they don't have a...
It's already computed for everybody else.
That's what I mean, it's not based on a degree and experience and all that. So theirs has to be done a little bit better.
And there's changes, you know, teachers, you know, once that salary schedule's set, it stays like that all year round, these, they get bumped up every year in January. Now, and let me get Donna to, like, if they worked two hundred and sixty-one days, there's first half, second half, that's what they would make. There's the total days they could work, that's their daily rate. That's what they, the four six nine, seven six nine says what you would make if they worked on your own. Divide it by two sixty-one, that's your daily rate. And that's, we're just using Plumway. Here's what they would make if they worked every day. That's, and then they get a pay raise here, so that's what they would make in the last six months. Um, when you add those two together, that's what they would make if they worked every day a year. Two hundred and sixty-one. So that's what their daily rate is. So the daily rate can't be more than what it would be if they worked every day. That's half your old second half, and that's a total of those two halves, divide it by two sixty-one working days. That's your daily rate. And then you guys just determine how many days you want them to work, and then I determine how much I need from the Army.
Now, this is what they worked last year, what, two twenty?
They worked two twenty.
I mean, this past school year.
Yeah, they worked, yeah, their, their contract's two twenty, you guys are not.
And they did not file a grievance on that.
Not to my knowledge. I, I don't know that there's anything they filed a grievance on.
Well, I want to say, I want to say yes. We're waiting to see what happens.
Yep, this is for the county school here, isn't it? That's true. Yeah, what we're looking at is...
What we're looking at is for the Up County.
Yep, but...
But they're waiting, there is a, uh, something pending.
Yeah, well, they tell us that on this handout, there's a few more here. But...
Yeah, I, I didn't see this.
There's a, the Board of Education, according to them, approved an eleven month, two hundred and twenty day contract for eleven, the two thousand eleven, twelve, this school year. And they, their, and their belief is that the Army paid the county the correct amount for those eleven months, but the county finance office doesn't pay them that amount. So that's, that's...
They pulled it back. The Army pulled the money back.
But they also stayed here, but they're considering action.
And that's fine. But, here's the key. The board sets their contract. They, they can't come and tell you, here's what I want to do, or they can't mislead or misrepresent, uh, and, you know, you can't win grievances on that.
Well, that's reason I asked you earlier.
And like I said, they have pulled, the Army has pulled that money back, so I think we're all fair and square with the Army.
Well, that's reason I asked you earlier, if this has been, gone to grievance twice, and the board's prevailed twice, and then the issue was his rate.
I mean, I, I don't have a problem with, you know, going through it again, you know?
Rather not, but you're like...
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, it's the same issues, it's the same story, and, and it's the same thing of, you know, they want to take, um, they want to be paid on calendar, calendar months, but they're not working those full months. And like I said, I think Trish has explained it as simple, and Trish, you might even want to add.
Well, I've been trying to understand this, you know, for quite some time, and, and trying to figure out the, just the, uh, difference between the calendar, what the Army sees as a calendar month versus what we see in the school system as a calendar month, which is twenty days. But it may start in the middle of one month and not end until the middle of the second month. But they see that, and we see that as one month, they see that as two months, you know? Because, uh, and, and I was just trying to understand, you know, their, their thinking. But I'm also trying to figure out how we come up with two hundred and sixty-one days to get their daily rate. Really don't do that for teachers, I guess, I'm trying to get that.
That's very easy, because you know how the state gives us those salary schedules? Then that's all, you, each salary schedule has a daily rate to the side of it. So they've already done this calculation in the background.
Right.
Okay? So, you know, no one, if, if I'm a two hundred and sixty-one day person, I have a master's degree, I look at the masters, and I've got twenty-five years of experience, here's my daily rate, I'm gonna work two hundred and sixty-one days, bam, there it is. And it's, it's just done in the background at the State Department, but they're going through the same calculation, you know? And then it's up to each county as to how many days you want to employ everybody, you know? Most of our people are two forty, but a lot of counties are still on two sixty-one.
But I, I guess with, with the JRO, you see, even though we only have a ten month contract with them...
With the Army.
With the Army. And going from two hundred days and then calculating it on that daily rate and then multiplying it by the two twenty versus the two sixty-one. Because how did you jump from a ten month to a twelve month? I, 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 that part now has, after they talked about it last week, I'm, I'm trying to figure that part out.
Well, it, it just goes, it just goes back to trying that they, you know, like you said, they want those full months, but they're not working those full months. And our month will start in the middle of a month and end in a, you know, end in another month and...
We would be, still be no more than eleven months, it wouldn't be no more than two hundred and twenty days. I, I guess I'm trying to figure out how we get from two twenty, or two hundred to two sixty-one, to figure out their daily rate. That's the part that...
Well, the, all, all I do is, if you look at a, if you look at a calendar and you start on July one and you go through June thirtieth, and if you look at the weekdays, there's gonna be two hundred and sixty on, a, a day or two, or year or two, but in most years, there's two hundred and sixty-one working days. So, if I was at the Army and my job started on July one and I was expected to work that full year, my daily rate of pay would be what I had calculated there. my daily rate of pay would be what I had calculated there. Now, the only thing, the only concern that we have with the Army, like, you guys, it has really nothing to do, what this board needs to do is determine, here's how many days we need these instructors to provide the best possible education in the J R T C program that we can. You guys determine that, then I do the calculations to say, okay, you want to employ them for two-hundred and twenty days, okay, I need to get this many months of pay from the Army. That's up to me to do that calculation, it's not up to the R O T C instructors to say, here's what it needs to be. That's up to me to determine that, based on proven documentation that's been through the grievance decision.
But, but we determine the days, but they determine the amount that they send. You don't say, now, here, I want you to send me this amount a month.
They determine the M I P, then you guys determine the days, and I see how many months of M I P that I need them to pay me. Because I don't want them, you know, if they send me twelve months of M I P, I need them to work two-hundred and sixty-one days. Because that's what twelve months is in the Army.
Oh, well, I have a question, uh, the extra days that the board has granted them for the past couple of years, does the Army reimburse us for that?
Yes.
For those, okay, so it's not.
Half.
Half, so the county is not picking up that.
Just half.
Just half, okay. That was a question.
And, and like I said, no, you know, and what we tried to do before was we tried to give them more days, okay? We were going to give the two-hundred and twenty-four days, that's before you come to school, so we were going to give them two-hundred and forty-one days. And, and had the board voted on that, then I would have went back and calculated, okay? If they're going to work two-hundred and forty-one, they're two-hundred and forty days, and two-something a day, here's how many months of the Army, the Army contract needs to be. So that's how it needs to work, you guys determine the days you want to employ them, and then I determine what I need to get from the Army.
So, you're basing how mu- how many days Army flies, that they would work within a ten-month, eleven-month, or twelve-month?
I, I get a daily rate based on twelve months, okay, twelve calendar months, I get my daily rate. Then you guys say, here's how many months I want these people to work, and it has been two-twenty for the past several years.
And that's the part that they are not agreeing with. Well, they're not agreeing with, because they're saying, their, their daily rate should not be based on two-hundred and sixty-one days, it should be based on the same formula or whatever that you do for teachers. And that's, I mean, it.
And, and if you look, if you hire, it would be a.
Okay.
No, but you know what? Get paid a lot.
No, wait a minute, teachers are twenty days a month, is that right? These guys are one, thirty or thirty-one days a month, is that right?
They want to be paid.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but they're not working all those days every month.
Right, see, that's their, their months are thirty or thirty-one days.
The Army pays us.
Yes.
But, but here's the thing, was yet the Army, and that's where, where the confusion is. It's like, how many days do you guys want these people employed, and want you to determine that, then also, Army, here's how much money I need to cover your hand for two-hundred and twenty days. But now, if, the argument, here's what they make as a teacher, so I go ahead and I start out as a teacher, two-hundred and twenty days.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what they are, if this was a teacher, that, that was me, that's what I would make with that, uh, let's see, an eighty and eleven years of experience, okay? That's the Army supplement, so that's how much more they make than a teacher who is working two-hundred and twenty days.
But, Bertie, you, you said you start them out at this, you start them out as a teacher rate?
As my calculation, yeah.
But.
That's part of the calculation. And then that's the difference between what a teacher makes and what the R O T C, the M I P is.
Okay, but I thought you said you didn't calculate theirs like you do teachers.
I don't, I don't calculate it, but I just put that in, and I'm saying, here's, here's my penny, here's what it is if there was a teacher.
This is fictitious?
Yes, yes.
This is just as for, for example, is that what you're telling me?
No, actually, I set them up in the computer to be paid.
As a teacher.
As a teacher, two-hundred and twenty days, and that's how they come out on the salary schedule. Okay, now, I know I have to pay them more than a teacher salary, so that's a supplement, they don't have to pay, that's a teacher salary.
Did you say that they determined the pay and we determined the days, or did you say, I tell them how much money I need?
Uh, you guys say, here's how many days I want these guys to work, here's how many days are required to.
And we say, okay, we want two-hundred and twenty days, then we're half.
Okay, now, look at this, okay? We want two-hundred and twenty days, I take their daily rate and multiply by that, and then I see how many months that I need to get two-hundred and twenty days of pay.
So you actually tell them how much money you want.
That's how.
They don't say, hey, here's the money, and you're going to, you've got this much money, so you are actually determining the daily rate.
No, no. This determines their daily rate, they set the M I P, that's the only thing the Army cares about, is that M I P, and that's why I put every month in here, just as if they worked every day. If they worked every day, here's the most you can make, and here's what your daily.
Do you have input on what the M I P is?
No, no.
If I'm misunderstanding, I, I, I think, I mean, I thought you were saying, yes, I tell them how much I need.
I tell them how many months, okay?
How many months.
How many months.
But they say, here's the whole pot of money that these guys.
They say.
This, this is what they qualify for, to, to, uh, get, okay, they qualify for this much money.
And that's based on their years of service and the rank in the Army, same as we're based on degree and years of service.
Well, I misunderstood.
I know, yes.
I thought you were saying you do everything, sorry.
Okay, so then I just kind of, I set them up in the, the salary schedules, the teachers, you know, two-hundred and twenty days, and then I have to put some additional money in there to get them up to the M I P. All right, Steve, go ahead.
I don't agree with you, Grace.
Larry? Carol?
I think I understand them, you know, they're working for the school board.
That's the key, it's, they're school board employees, we say how many days that we need these folks to work. Once we determine that, then I will look at, you know, what their M I P is, and I'll say, well, okay, in order for them to make two-hundred and twenty, in order for them to make like the sixty-three, I need ten months of Army pay. And that's how, I mean, that's how it's worked since I've been here, and that's how it's went to, through both of those grievance procedures, and and I think Rebecca Tender's been with me on both of those, so she and I are, have been through the wringer running.
And, and the eight additional days, they get paid at that same rate?
Yeah, that's totally outside of their contract, but yes, they do.
The same rate as they got in the other two-hundred and twenty.
Now, here's what the board can do, you know, like, you can both give them more days, and then I would go back and recalculate and determine what the Army needs to pay, or believe it as is. We do, and I, you know, I'm telling you that I've done this for six or seven years, and I need only ten months of Army pay. And if we deviate from that, you know, we're, we could run the risk of, of unstated vacation.
Well, do we have to go every year and renew their contract?
Yes, you do.
They don't get a continuing contract, what's the?
There's a contract with the Army that's renewed every year.
It's just the Army contract, I think, that's renewed every year, not their, uh, employment contract with the board.
No, it, they would go through the same personnel, you know, if, if their numbers decrease to the point where we would not need two instructors, we would need one. We'd go through the same procedure, uh, uh, through Christmas season.
I guess my question is, why are we going through it every year, or how many days it gets?
Because they bring it up.
They're bringing it up.
They bring it up.
Well, why, I mean, they got one, they got a contract of two-hundred and twenty, why do we even need to look at it?
So unless the board changed, I agree with Mr. Curry. Well, maybe they should ask you to, but unless you were going to, like, Trish had lived here, if you were going to decrease it, you'd have to terminate that contract in that manner, then give them new one. But if you're going to keep it the same, I'm like, Brad, I don't understand why you have to deal with it, just because they want to.
Personnel, because they're employee board, or the board, and how many days are we employing them?